He is not, no. Yeah, we're ready to go then?
Yeah.
Calling the zoning commission regular meeting to order on February 1st at seven o'clock. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They'll need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices can cause confusion for those attending virtually. Please call the roll.
Razzuolo?
Here.
Crew?
Here.
Here.
Natalie?
Has an excuse absent.
Kalis?
Here.
In the audience is trustee Engelmann, zoning inspector Wilson, and are there any trustees?
They are, I don't recognize the phone number. So, pardon me. To begin with, we have the minutes from the last, actually it ends up being three meetings. I want to make sure that everyone had a chance to review and actually read through them. I know we got them a little bit late, so I know for myself personally, I need to get them like, so I have a weekend to work on them. If anyone has not had a chance to review it, that's fine. We can table it till next week or next month. Let me know. If not, I'll entertain a motion to review them or to make amendments or approve as written. Yeah, right. I'm sorry. Right now I'm looking at the organizational meeting.
I'm making a motion to approve the organizational meeting as written.
I could second that.
Okay, motion by Fisher, second by Kalis. Call the roll.
Razzuolo?
Yes.
Crew?
Yes.
Yes.
Kalis?
Yes. And moving on to the public hearing. Are there any issues with this one? If no one's found any problems, we can go ahead and accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Crew.
I'll second.
And seconded by Mr. Fisher. And finally, we regularly.
Next motion.
Move back through.
I can second, yeah.
Seconded by Fisher. Call the roll please.
Razzuolo?
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so all the meetings or all the minutes are approved. And I'm going to pass this down if I can. Made this, this past month, I had an opportunity to meet with Cindy and Tom, and he talked a little bit about some of the things that have been going on within the zoning office. As long as I've been a part of the zoning commission, I always kind of felt like there was somewhat of a disconnect between what was going on in the office and what the rest of the commission was or what the whole commission was hearing. So I asked Mr. Wilson if he wouldn't mind doing a zoning inspector's report each month as well. It's going to get us caught up on what's going on. Typically, this is going to come towards the end of the meeting, but I do want to have him kind of start kick off the meeting here today because the intent I have behind this meeting is that we can look at what old business has been as well as what are the big areas, the big chunks we kind of want to tackle as we're moving forward for the next eleven months. And I think with Mr. Wilson kind of giving us, getting us caught up to date as to what's going on, what has been going on and what potential problems may be looming. It'll add a little bit of information to our conversation. So, Mr. Wilson, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you very much for inviting me. Well, the first thing I'd like to do is just look at past quarterly activity and activity for 2023 and then give you some thoughts on what we've got taking place right now. If you look at the fourth quarter report, we had $8,903 in fees come in and actually, this quarter that just passed, the end of the year, is not always the slowest. The slowest is coming up next month, but it's one of the slower months and that's mainly due to weather and, you know, we don't, we don't have our people out building decks and houses and so forth, quite like we do in the summertime. So I don't think there's anything unusual to report on that third quarter. It's about where we normally see it. But I'd like to move to the 2023 report. This is kind of a rather interesting report. I've tried to highlight a couple of things for you. We had 27, I'm sorry, we had 32 new homes in 2023, and that compares with 27 a year ago. Other activities, you would expect people building decks and that kind of things, but we had 25 accessory buildings. We're seeing that a lot as people move to larger lots here in Hinckley. They they need a place to put their lawn mowers. Sometimes it's animals and other things, but that's where we're at.
We had a Any unique accessory buildings?
What's that?
Any unique accessory buildings?
Any.
Attempting to do anything with an accessory building that you thought was unusual, strange, questionable? Or were they pretty much sheds armed?
Yeah, they, I don't think we had anything that didn't fit the, you know, the standard code as far as size or location or anything. We didn't have many variances this year, but we've got some interesting things coming up that I'd like to get into a little bit later, but it was pretty, it was pretty standard this past year. And I'll point out something that wasn't standard. We had a large amount of fees collected this year. Let me see if I can find it here. Our fees were $42,853 and I found that to be a pretty good amount. And as I look through here, the houses were about the same and then I came upon this $24,305. It's about the seventh, eighth, ninth item down on your list, $24,000 for new business. And that stumped me for a minute, but what that is, is senior housing development up here. It was in our B2 district, so it fell under business as far as the computer and as far as our fees were concerned. So that was, that was quite a large fee that we
It's ours is showing zeros.
The fee was $24,305. And I'm sorry, this year was $42,000. A year ago it was $59,000. And I was curious why it was
Why it dropped?
Why it dropped? And so I pulled out the report for 2022 and it's $24,305 for that senior housing fee up there. Everything else I think is pretty normal. You know, we continue to get pools. We continue, people continue to build decks and and it's, it's pretty routine. Another thing that's happening is we're seeing a lot of lot splits. And I think personal opinion is that price of land is pretty high in Hinckley and people are saying, hey, I could sell off that two acres. And so we're seeing quite a few lot splits. We had 49 this year compared to 31 last year. Anything I can answer on this financial that you see might want? Of course, feel free if you see something later to call me or send an email.
Are there any penalties on here?
Anyway.
Any kind of zoning penalties or?
You know, we don't have any penalties. What we run into is people sometimes won't call us when they're going to build something. And our fee for that is we double the fee if they start a project without calling for a measurement, make sure they're at the correct setbacks and so forth. But the one thing we instituted a couple of years ago is we have them initial that they have two inspections, one when they put the stakes out and one they put the footer in, and we have them sign that. And then we keep a copy and give them a copy. And we sort of go over that a couple of times when they're paying us for the permit and so forth. And we don't run into problems too much. I mean, once in a while, somebody will, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to call you and and how far along are you? Well, we're, we're just going to start digging. Well, don't dig till I get there. And then, you know, so it's we had one a couple of years ago where the company actually built a garage. And what happens is we keep this in a file and every two or three months, we go through that file. And if we see an old permit, we call them and say, you still going to do this project or you're going to not give it? And in this case, the lady at the company said, oh, we're done with that project. And I went up to measure it. It was supposed to be 15 feet away. From the sideline, it was in the R2 district and it was three feet away. And so they went to the board and asked for a variance and the BZA said no. And then I think they took us to court, if I remember right, and the court sided with the BZA and they actually ended up tearing that garage down. So in the seven years I've been here, that was the only one that I saw actually go to court and and they sided with the township, which was a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stay up to date on your paperwork.
Yeah, yeah. And then to bring you up today, what Chairman Razzuolo was talking about, we had a little meeting and what we're running into, we've got two businesses that have opened up in a residential district. And according to our code, as you all know, that's a conditional use. If somebody wants to have a home-based business in a residential district, it's a conditional use. And so I met with both those gentlemen this week and explained that and going to meet with them again next week and get them before the Board of Zoning Appeals. I mean, I explained, you know, if it's a permitted use, I can okay it, but if it's a conditional use or variance, it's got to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so it's going to be interesting, but I think as far as the code that you guys have written, I mean, we may find something since we've got two that have come up already, I mean, just recently. But my feeling is that the code is well-written and we've, it's pretty easy for me to follow and this is what you've got to do and and so maybe by next month I'll have a little better report whether these, what these guys are going to do. And then the other thing that we talked about at our meeting was the bed and breakfast. We're seeing a second one pop up in Hinckley. And actually, I spoke with the health department on this. I called the county to find out what their position was. And I first talked to the health department and they said if they don't really do too much with B&Bs, if it's under six beds, six beds, I think that's how they said it, six bedrooms. Maybe they said six guests, so don't, don't quote me on that. They really don't get involved going out and checking water and sewer and all that kind of stuff. So I explained our situation. We've got two that are not typical type B&Bs. They're throwing some parties and doing some things that are causing the neighbors to complain to us and
Is that how you were made aware of both of them is through?
Yeah, through complaints, yes. And so I called Modena County Planning and asked them, what are you guys going to do? Not what you're going to do, but advise me what to do. And they said leave it with us for a little bit. We're going to, you know, send it through our offices here in the county and we'll get back together and advise you the best we can. So I don't have anything set up right now to see those two. I'm kind of waiting for the county. And in the meantime, I had a call from Brunswick Hills and they're having very similar problem. So the zoning inspector from Brunswick Hills told me she would also call the county planning and talk to them. So it's something that we, we may come back and ask.
Short-term rental?
Yeah, they're Airbnb's.
Yeah, we have, we, you guys did a great job of defining short-term rentals and so forth, but we may have to ask, come back to you and ask you to see what we can do with you know, a B&B that turns into a party center or something like that.
The, one of them, one of them is also pretty unique. Mr. Wilson shared the listing with me here, but it's, it's actually an outbuilding on the primary residence. What they're renting out as an Airbnb. So whether they're there or not, I mean, it's just one of these things that we need to look at our definition and get back into the conversation we're having a couple of years ago that
I'm not even sure you, that that would, you know, we would have to use the short-term rentals for an accessory building that's being used for living because
Well, because ultimately it's
Yeah.
So you essentially now have two families on a single.
You have a multifamily.
So that, that one might be dealt with in a
A little bit different.
A little bit of a different manner than
Yeah. Well, and like
That, yeah, they added on all this stuff.
And like the, when I talked to the health department at the county, just to clarify, they did say when it's a rental within the, you know, within the residence, they didn't talk about something outside that. So that's, that's a, I think it's not just us. I think a lot of places are a lot of township are struggling with this and how to handle it.
It's right on the park, the horse front trail. So I saw the construction. I wondered what they were doing. Now I know.
So, and I don't even know if that qualifies under our definition of a short-term owner-occupied dwelling rental.
Because
Well, I Think we, I would have to look at it.
Well, the
I think it says dwelling, doesn't it?
Definition is any dwelling.
Yeah, dwelling. Look at the definition of dwelling.
Orion.
Yeah, it's not a dwelling.
Well, and I wondered if, if when someone is renting a building for parties or B&B or whatever, does that become a home-based business? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just not giving a
I do worry that we're going to see more of these where they're renting it out as what they're calling a short-term short-term rental, but they're really effectively using it as an event center. So they're saying you can rent it for the weekend for a wedding, have your wedding in the backyard, do whatever you want. And by the way, you can stay here if you want to, but you have 100 people coming in really for a wedding for the, for the evening and maybe six or seven or eight of them are staying there. And it's one thing for a special event where residents have that once every five years, four years, whatever it is in their backyard. But it's a different thing when your next-door neighbors having a wedding ceremony every single weekend at the property. There's another one that just recently I think sold or is sale pending that I think is going to become another Airbnb of a very similar nature. It's going to be an event center.
And you know, one of the, one of the things I think we need to also consider is, okay, well, if they're doing a short-term rental, is that something we want to lease? And is it all that different from someone doing an annual rental with a tenant? You know, and these, these are the conversations. That's honestly, thanks, Mr. Wilson, for coming up. Do you have more to add?
No, no, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. But that's, that's part of the reason I wanted Mr. Wilson to come up is, you know, now that kickstarts a lot of the conversations. I went back and I looked at some working topics. Mr. Pearl, at the end of last meeting, approached me, asked for the list of working topics that the zoning commission had. And I reached out to Marcus because a few years ago, we started a Google document and it never really went anywhere. So we have, we had stuff that was old business and we pulled it off of the agenda until it was time, until there were fewer things on it. I think what would be worthwhile is to kind of identify tonight anything that's a burning interest to anyone on the commission. And obviously this isn't like, oh, this is the one window to put something on it. But what are, what are the big chunks that we want to revisit? Or did you become aware of a blind spot that you haven't thought of before? The list that I sent to Mr. Pearl was this is all stuff that was originally on our old business, conservation developments, nuisances, senior housing, riparian setbacks, short-term rentals, multi-unit buildings, whether it's senior housing apartments, multifamily attached dwellings, group homes, Chapter 18, alternative energy facilities, the screening, lot definition, lighting. Now, some of that we've already addressed. I just wanted to make sure I gave, gave an exhaustive list of what, what we had been looking at. Of the, and Mr. Pearl actually came back with some, some suggestions as well, and I'll get to that here in a bit. That, I don't think that's an all-encompassing list. And I'd like to know what other topics you guys would be interested in discussing as well.
I think my two highest, I would say would be short-term rentals. We're seeing a lot of movement in that direction. And then the other thing that we talked about doing last year, you remember the trustees provided this recommendation and then we said, we'll wait till the, till the new year and after the past tax amendment. But that would be the architectural design if we want to do anything with that. I'm not as, that's not as important to me as the short term, but I do think that that's something that we said we would consider this time.
Have there been any other concerns or complaints to the township regarding any kind of zoning issue? Do we know?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, you would probably be the one to answer, unless the trustees know.
Well. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, actually, I think our code is working very well. I mean, you don't know until something comes up like this B&B or these new businesses that are occurring in residential districts. And then you really start grabbing your book and looking at you know, how I'm going to handle this. But I think we're, we have a good code and we'll just have to as things come up, if it doesn't work, we'll come back to you, you know?
One thing that I know is an ongoing problem because they've been to so many meetings are the golf balls, the nuisance at Hinckley Hills and Bellis. They specifically said at the last meeting they attended that they've stopped complaining. It doesn't mean that the problem has resolved, that they're still having to park across the street and stuff along those lines. So
Well, we have put, not we, but the owners have put new fence up.
Yeah.
And I personally haven't heard complaints.
Well, and that's what they had said at the last meeting they came to. You hadn't heard anything because they just stopped complaining, but they, they're still getting thousands of golf balls in their yard on a regular basis.
I wouldn't say thousands is a big number.
Okay, I don't know. When was this new fencing done this year? Are we talking or five years ago?
That was done, I want to say, beginning of last year is when they put up the new fencing. And then they, they attended, I want to say it was maybe October when they came in and
Yeah.
And, and we're saying, no, this is definitely still an issue.
I just don't know from a zoning perspective, what more we do on that. We went through the nuisance, you know, we looked at the nuisance avenue. That really didn't pan out in a way that we thought made sense. We looked at it from a rezoning standpoint, even if you rezoned, it doesn't take away the current use of the golf facility. So I think from a zoning perspective, it's, it's, it's a topic that, that really, you know, we're not best suited to address their
So the, the, I don't know that this is necessarily a corollary, but I think it would be worthwhile for our commission to recommend to the trustees that we come up with a zoning or a, you know, like a violation fee list, where if you're, if you violate this or to this degree or something, they, they let them figure out the details behind it. But some sort of violation fee list that escalates with more with, with a higher frequency of violation. And again, to your point, I don't know if nuisance would necessarily be covered in that.
Yeah. And how is it enforceable? I mean, how, I understand what you're saying, but are you going to have to have a camera there to see the golf ball go? Or is just someone saying, here, I found this in my yard going to suffice? So
Well, I mean, that's, that's for that particular issue. I'm thinking a zoning fee schedule. How many times have we said, well, there's really nothing we can do except talk to them? This gives us another tool in the tool bag.
But, but I guess, you know, the trustees already set a zoning fee schedule. They set it for all of the new permits that are pooled, all the conditionals. So they've got, I don't know that they have the authority to assess penalties. But assuming that they do, they already have the authority to do that. I don't know that it would be the zoning commission's place to now say, this is what we suggest for fees, just in the same way that
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying to suggest the level of fees. I'm just saying put forth a suggestion that it's a, it is an idea they consider implementing because then it allows Mr. Wilson the opportunity to go out and say, all right, you need to do this.
So as I recall, just from listening to the meetings last year, I think the short-term housing was looked at and it was defined, but there was never any, anything really established further than that. And what that boiled down to, I want to say that it was probably also Buzzard's Cove at that point. But what it boiled down to was nothing was, was further discussed because you were at an impasse. But what it boiled down to was nothing was was further discussed because you were at an impasse because how do you enforce it? I think that's where it ended up. And by establishing it, kind of like what you're saying, if you do come up with a schedule, it's something that can be discussed in the beginning and and maybe that's enough knowing, knowing that it's there for people to start off on the right foot instead of having the complaints because I mean, as you know, there's going to be more rentals. It's going to happen. And you've got to be ready for it. I think you're right.
And again, these are things that we're just kicking around as, are these things that we want to broach over the course of the next eleven months? Or however long.
I would say you were talking about Buzzard's Cove. Wasn't there talk last year about potential creating a new district down there as well?
Yeah. So we, we actually went through quite a bit of time into it. And I, I was the one who said, all right, let's beat, beat back the truck up. Do we want to put this board in this text amendment? Because frankly, we, we got a lot of pushback from the surrounding neighbors as to what we wanted to do, when we want to rezone it. And now we're sitting here saying, all right, do we create a wholly new business district for really one spot? And I think in general, and I'm, I'm sure you guys most likely agrees, spot zoning is, is that can get problematic very quickly. And if we're creating a whole new district for really one business. And I, I honestly, I think the only reason we didn't make it legal, nonconforming and rezone at R one is because there was so much resistance and no support from other neighbors saying, yep, let's just make it R one.
I, I will say, and it doesn't solve any of the problems that's going on down there, that based upon our comprehensive plan, and I think just based upon that that surrounding area, if nothing else, it makes sense to move that to B two, which is where the comprehensive plan suggests that it should be. Because they are suggesting that that area and the area up by West one thirtieth are, are, I think it's called community business. And and so again, it doesn't, it, it, what it does is the B one is the most general business district. So it moves it into a slightly more restrictive business district. It doesn't solve any of the concerns.
Are you looking for where it is in the comprehensive plan? Mr. Marzullo?
No, no, I'm just, I'm actually looking at the districts.
And just so that you know, I'm referring to thirty nine of the comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, there's a giant arrow that runs through that district, so it overlays the green. But it's the red color that matches that community. So it's called a neighborhood commercial as opposed to town center and opposed to the commercial, which is the B one district. So that's just a consideration that would match, match with our comprehensive plan. I do think it's a little more restrictive than the B one district that you currently have at that location.
So I mean, if nothing else, it's probably something that we can put on the list as maybe this is something we want to address.
I'll throw this out there and it's, I just started thinking about this recently. Full disclosure, I have twenty acres and that might apply here, but what I'm looking at is, you know, we just had another subdivision get proposed that is a seventy acre subdivision. And it's going to result in twenty six, twenty seven houses. And they're proposing a private street. Well, when, when I looked at Rockbridge, Rockbridge was sold for one point five million dollars. And what someone could have done there is they could have subdivided that into five lots and potentially made a common drive as opposed to a street. And all of a sudden, those lots become three three hundred thousand dollar approximate lots. Let's say you wanted to go in, you wanted to buy one and you had a private and a common drive that went through. Now, what if we made the common those, what if we did that, but we required each one of those lots to be fifteen acres? You would have been able to get four, five, six lot, five, I think five would be the maximum. You could get five lots in there. And that would have covered the cost for doing that subdivision. And yet you have a subdivision has far fewer lots than than the subdivisions that are proposed. So it's currently, our code does not allow for common drives, except for in conservation developments. So I, that's something that I've started to think about is, is there a way that we could tailor the code to incentivize larger lots? In fewer subdivisions of those lots. And so that's just one thing I thought about as a possibility. For again, these sixty to seventy acre lots where we're seeing them subdivided now into two acre lots as a way to potentially incentivize people to do this because as it stands, if, if you have to have a million five to buy a sixty acre lot, a lot of people aren't affording that for a single home. But if you can have four, five, six homes on that sixty acres and avoid the road costs, it might be a feasible plan. Not sure we want to tackle it. But it was a consideration. I don't even know how it worked. Like, I don't know if you could say a common drive and you each had to have a certain amount of frontage on the road, be equivalent to that common drive amount. So you took a twelve foot row and you're common driving, you subdivided into four, five, two acre frontage for each one of those houses. Houses, I don't know how it work. It's just, I'm throwing out there possible economics to get you to very large lots with, without the infrastructure costs that comes with the road. So not sure.
If they were to put in a private road, it's still subject to Medina County requirements, but if we call it a.
If you put in a private street, it still has to be one of the road standards of Medina County. And it still has to, to have all the other requirements. But and again, we would have to check with planning commission. I, I think that under, it's either five or under five is considered a minor subdivision. And so that doesn't have to go through the same level of review as a large one. And that's why I'm saying if you took a sixty acre lot, you said, okay, we want to allow four homes within that sixty or whatever the subdivision is, you could take that and say, okay, we'll, we'll allow a common drive as long as every lot within that common drive has at least fifteen acres, has at least whatever amount would work to say this would allow you to have fewer homes, but yet make that property economical for a group to buy.
It's interesting. I kind of like that.
I don't know. I just, I knew someone who was considering buying the Rockbridge for a million dollars and they wanted to put four or five homes on it. But the cost of infrastructure wouldn't work. And as I said, it went in for one point five anyway, but then I started thinking, I wonder if we could do something that would have reduced that infrastructure cost and still supported the four or five homes, because I'm sure every neighbor around there would prefer four or five homes than twenty or twenty five homes.
Great Hunt off of yeah, off of six oh six. How did that, what is that? That's not a common drive, obviously.
We have some common drivers. There's a common drive on Mattingly with, with lots that are half an acre. So back a long time ago, certainly common drives were, were permitted. We've just done away with common drives. And now the only reference to common drives is in the conservation development language. So, but I don't know if, if that's heated a long time ago, they very well could have gotten through.
Looks relatively new.
Great Hunt Trails right on six oh six, we're not been there, but that's a, that's a public group.
As I said, it's something if someone went to run with, if someone went to call them a dining planning commission, figure out whether that's even a feasible option for them. I have no idea. I was just kind of thinking about these seventy acre subdivisions because it seems like that's the sweet spot right now for development is somewhere around seventy.
But I, I think our, the way of conservation development language is worded. Finding, finding the right place for one right now is, is very difficult.
Yeah, I'm not talking about subdivision conservation.
No, 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 I, I totally understand what you're saying. But that's, that's where my mind goes when you say seventy acre subdivision because you get that extra acreage and now all of a sudden, okay, now it's, now it's a little bit more viable.
Right, right. Those become, conservation is even more limited. So you, even if you found a hundred acres, you still have to find the sewer and the water. So that's, that's far more challenging. From a development perspective than.
Yep.
But I just don't know that there are very many large hundred acre plus plots here. I mean, the one that we just saw proposed, I think it was actually three lots that were cobbled together to get you to the seventy. So it just seems like, you know, we saw that one. We saw the one next to Skyland is about a seventy acre development. Hartview Homes, which is the R two is about a seventy acre development. Rockbridge is about a seventy acre development.
Yeah, but there's still, there's still quite a large quite a few large plots of land that are still very rural, along state. And I'm not just state, but I mean, I just drove that earlier today and I'm, I'm driving, I see the, the larger farms. I'm like, those are, those are still very large and.
Particularly, I mean, southern, you know, the, the southern, southern side.
Well, three oh three has a few, few more than the, than the northern, but the northern has at least two or three. Yeah. Farms. Yep. What about yourself, Michelle? Anything, any ideas on your side?
I, the short term rentals, I think is an interesting one. We, I think we tabled it because I was kind of a holdout there. So I haven't really changed my mind on it, but I think it's something that we really should discuss, given that there are these things coming into the community. And we're going to hear more and more about it. And that's just right, that one's just right around the corner from me. So I'm, I'm into the short term rentals. I don't know how we would do enforcement on nuisance. I, I just, I think that we could talk about that until we're blue in the face. And so we'd have to find, you know, and to find enforcing it before we could even go there. And I don't know how we would do it, whether it's the lighting, lighting's a little bit easier for nuisance, if it's directed or, but the lumen's the noise, that one's tough. And so is, you know, the objects being thrown. That one's tough. So.
Honestly, I feel the with, with nuisances. I, I hate to do it, but I, I think we kind of have to push that on the safety forces.
But then again, they, they, they can't do anything unless there's something for them to enforce.
And, and, and safety forces don't enforce zoning. They enforce.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, but I'm, but that's where I'm thinking like, if, if you continue to have projectiles coming in and damaging your property, that's, that is something the safety forces can come in and say, all right, file a report, go do the paperwork and I mean.
What I think they would then say, following what you just said, is they would tell to the people, you need to go to the prosecutor, you need to go that route.
Yep.
I'm not sure that our safety forces could do anything more than what, you know,
Yeah.
the documentation.
Yeah.
So. Would there be any, any appetite for any language around the conservation developments?
We, we've tweaked the conservation since that went through, right? Because that's, we, we expanded the frontage
Yep.
to the, to the increased frontage.
Yep.
We've now expanded the, the front yard setback.
Yep.
We created that envelope. And we've created rear yard setback.
Right.
So we've done a fair amount on conservation since then. I, I don't know what more we would look at at this point. And then we also did the requirement for water.
What if we permit them in R two instead of R one?
We instead of R one? Well, the suit was in an R one district that brought about the conservation developments because the issue was that we were requiring two acres and they said, where's health, safety and general welfare on the two acres? And so that's what inspired the the conservation developments in the first place, parking in the R two. I think you can go right back to the issue that we had, which caused the development, that language to be put in our book in the first place.
Who's going to build a, who's going to build a conservation development in the R two district? One, there's not a lot of space and two, they're already allowed to have seven point seven five acre lots.
Yep. Then, then that's, that's where I was thinking it probably makes more sense than the R two. You're already looking at smaller lot sizes.
But you're not going to give up a hundred eight or fifty acres in the R two district. There's no reason the developer would ever give up fifty acres in an R two district to get smaller lots because they already have the small ones.
I don't know. I think our conservation language is fine. I somehow wish we could change the language for the other developments, you know, give setbacks and stuff.
Chair, one thing that thanks for, we, we should amend our our site plan to require the HOA documents for all subdivisions. It's listed for conservation developments, but not for other ones.
Yep.
And so that's a very minor thing, but I definitely would like to include that as a text amendment in our next round.
And I came across it earlier today. So now recreational marijuana is permissible in Ohio. We have section four point one seven, which forbids medicinal marijuana in any zoning in the township. Is there would, would it make sense to amend that for all marijuana or remove it entirely or?
I think we need to wait on more guidance for that. Inspector Wilson and I actually very early on this year, very early on, had, we listened in on a webinar on this and, and townships are, I think, my understanding are townships are permitted to ban it. But I think that that will come through the trustees and then if, if there's one proposed, I think something happens that triggers another level of review. So, but I think a lot of that will happen at trustee level. But I think that it might be too, I don't think that they've finalized, at least as of January, when we listened, there was a lot of open openness to it that they thought it really created the rulemaking. And so I'd say, yes, let's keep that as a lit item on our agenda, but not one of the top topics to talk about because they're still working through the regs on it.
You must have heard about the other surrounding areas putting a language in, like big Broadview Heights dead run, runs.
Strongsville, Strongsville, North Royalton, Brexville, Broadview Heights.
Right.
Well, I'm sorry. Strongsville, North Royalton, Banning, Brexville, Broadview Heights to study.
Right. Yeah, I heard it on the.
Just looking through the book today.
That's a little different.
Radio today, I think. Yeah.
This is from the thirtieth. So this is both to grow and or sell. This is what we're talking about.
Well, what, what's currently in the book is section four point one seven on page thirty two, medicinal marijuana. Medicinal marijuana cultivators, processors and dispensaries are prohibited from being located in all zoning districts in of Hinkley Township. So the medicinal, I know that came through the trustees initially. And I, I don't know if the trustees are intending to expand it.
I did bring, I did bring the.
Um, I did bring, I did bring this up um. Two meetings ago um for discussion with the trustees and the um. There's three components, there can be cultivation, processing and dispensing. So those are the three business lines that can. Be out there. Uh, there were some um amendments. State reps were trying to get the House got through, but the Senate sat on them, so which would have maybe changed some of that. Uh, but at this point, the original bill issue two as a past is what is law. And right now that permits uh townships to either prohibit, limit. Recreational adult use. Uh, those conditions that you spoke of, if there was like an existing. Say farm or dispensary, then it becomes more difficult. But even there, like if somebody new was coming in, the township could require like like a ninety day window where they could. Say, no, we don't want this. So the trustees are gonna discuss it further. Um, because everybody wants to review more closely and um kind of proceed from there, so.
And also mine was sharing Granger.
Right.
They made a decision or no?
Yeah, I don't know at this point, so, but you know, if we're gonna. We gotta look at what we have with respect to medical and decide what we want to do with with the adult.
So we'll we'll keep it on the list, um but. Asterix, pen pending trustee uh guidance, I suppose, or action. I I think we're good on multi unit buildings. We we've already covered that, we removed group homes. We already touched on the screening in um chapter eighteen. Uh, I believe we even updated lot definition, did we not?
Are you talking about screening for solar?
Yes, screening for solar.
That we talked about.
Yeah, exactly. That I'm I'm crossing off, yeah, I'm I'm crossing off all the stuff that. Miss fallen off um lot. Yes, we we already addressed addressed the lot definition. Lighting was something that we discussed briefly. Um, is that something that we want to get into again or take it off?
We've been all over the board on that at least two or three meetings and we've gotten no consensus at all, I think with respect to light.
I don't know if we didn't have consensus, but we didn't know how to. How would you enforce a lot of it?
Well, I think that there were some people who want more lighting in certain business districts for security reasons, then we had other people who said, no, I'm not a. Light creates more pollution and I want fewer lights. And so there was that back and forth as to. How how much lighting do we want to require and and.
I was residential lighting.
Yeah, and and also are are we putting more restrictions on a business owner and all that stuff? I think we're pretty well divided on that one, all over the board, might make sense to scrap it until.
Yeah, I mean, we can keep it on the list, I I, you know, and just keep moving it down and to the next year's text amendments and maybe someone wanted at some point, but.
Or or if something comes to surface and makes us look at.
Yeah, exactly. Like, I mean, honestly, like.
As often, that's what brought brings.
Rentals, we we almost tabled it and didn't even put it in and.
Except if we have this town center coming in. I don't know, maybe lighting is something that we want to look at. I don't know. I think. You know, you'd hate to see Strongsville Mall as you're coming into three oh three.
Would it be a standpoint of just new development? I mean, could you do it like that instead of existing?
That's what we talked about and we talked about during this part of like the preliminary final site plan. It's really the only time that you could achieve enforcement is as part of a site plan review. That you could look at and and confirm that they are meeting lighting standards. Um, so yes, that's really what we come into play is for preliminary and final site plans. I think at least.
The reality is, if if they upgrade the lighting, I mean, there's. After the site plan leaves us. If if we say, yeah, this is good, and then they upgrade the lighting ten years from now and it's their stadium lights, like.
Lock them in at a lumen, a certain lumen?
But even that, I mean, that's when you're looking at the difference between LED and and a traditional light. Or the halogen lights and I mean. How many times you've been driving down the road and someone's got those xenon lights and you close your eyes and you can still see bones in your hand. As the technology changes and and they're still, they have um comparable lumens or different wattages and and they're all. Measured a little bit differently, so I don't know that even keeping it at the lumen is necessarily. The best answer out there.
We've talked about directionality, we've talked about lumens, those were all items that we.
But maybe we shouldn't have it somewhere on our list, though. I I mean, does town center project is just going to lead to more?
More and more and more and more and more and more. Um, all right, I mean, we'll we'll keep that one on. So far, the only things that are taken off are the things that we've already covered. Put to bed, which is good. I mean, we've added a couple of things, which is also great.
Is senior housing a concern again?
I don't know. Could it be?
And how could, how is our language, our zoning language? How could we prevent? Another senior housing, the way it happened at a hundred thirty.
I we could potentially require all. All detached dwellings. Or I I know we discussed. Maybe two meetings ago, three minutes.
Meeting, we said we were going to table anything to do with senior housing until the annexation process was complete.
Oh, that's right, we said.
Then we, then there was a judgment happened like the next day after our meeting. You're the one who suggested it, Mr. Marzino.
Yeah, I know.
And then now we're in the field process. So that's where we had, that's where we left that discussion is.
And I guess we need to.
Just wait for the annexation to be complete.
If we want to put more verbiage around it. What does the annexation decision?
Because one of the things we talked about is if you look at where most of the buildable area is, because it would have to be B one or B two. It's very close to Brunswick town, Brunswick border. If this annexation goes through, do we really want to create more restrictive barriers that? Would then potentially encourage either the senior housing, should they want to expand? Or another senior housing to seek annexation to Brunswick? Or do we not want to put any more restrictions on it? Because we'd rather have that within our own community than that same parcel. Having that same thing potentially worse, but because we would have no control over it, because it's in Brunswick community. Yeah, but now I'm also thinking the B one at Bellis and six oh six. About the same size as the existing senior housing complex. And you and I both said, oh, that seems like a great place for senior housing.
Mr. Chairman, can't our our senior housing only in B two, is it that?
B one, B two, B one.
Oh, B one and B two? I thought it was just B two.
So that really there are two hotspots that could still definitely be developed like that.
Yeah, well, yes and no, that would require Bellis has no. Absolute massive plant. That that's probably not feasible. The most likely place would be B two, which again would be bordering Brunswick.
And North Royalton.
Okay, so that will, let's just leave that go for a while. Till it's similar.
We can keep it on the list with an asterisk, it's.
Yeah. Riparian setbacks. I I don't even remember what we're gonna touch on that.
That was, I don't remember either. It had something to do with the, wasn't the concern of.
There were a few residents that came forth with riparian setbacks, what, like a year and a half or so ago?
That, but that was on the maintenance of it, of the riparian setback, wasn't it? I'm just thinking of the one I know of that that I sent to Tom.
There's also some language that has to do with um, like when this whole section comes into play. These regulations shall only apply when both of the following two conditions are met. Soil disturbing activities regulated by the zoning resolution are proposed and the riparian setback is set forth by these regulations and a zoning certificate or conditional zoning. Certificate is required or necessary. So outside of those, this whole section doesn't even apply. Um, and so there was some question on that. I it it's a tough one, I think, as to whether we do anything with this one or not, not um. In part, the county has so many rules on riparian setbacks anyway that it's like, and they're the ones who. Really are the subject matter experts on this this topic, you know, not us, so it's. Right, so it's kind of like, why, you know, is is this a topic that we want to work on? Developing even more or refining and.
Well, if there's already, well, yeah, there's, if there's already um some kind of regulation by the county. Then I don't, I think we're good.
More or less, it gets through everything that we've, we've had on the list um in the last couple of years. Um, but uh. We we did receive a couple of suggestions from Mr. Pearl. Um, let's see. Uh, possibly some dwelling unit requirements, i.e. one single family residence per lot with no breezeway. Connecting the primary residence to a secondary residence on the same lot.
We have that now.
Yeah. And I think I'm just misreading the uh, the email as all. Obviously, um, we're still kind of toying with the idea of a B four or B one at Bellis and six oh six. B two. Regulation of short term rentals, multi unit buildings, apartments and group homes. Mentioned updating riparian setbacks, um, because team is constantly revising the hundred year flood plan. Um, outdoor light control, sound pollution control, architectural building design. And so, I mean, obviously, I I think we hit pretty much all of that with the exception, um. We're we're kind of feel like our hands are strapped on nuisance. So, John, do you have any additional input you might want? Any other subjects?
Yeah, like again, to to kind of look at that other it's Colbert, you know, I I think that's a pretty good area of focus. I just think it's gonna be a hot area in the future.
What what specifically do you want to? I mean, just completely rezone it, make it, I, because I mean, we're. Uh, we're definitely gonna be looking at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and I guess weighing out, you know, I mean, you said last time, uh, it was gonna go R one, I believe, is what we're talking about.
We were talking about R one.
And it was R one. We went all the way through the text map amendment process with R one, actually, and then.
That got pushed back.
Then that that's when we see pushback. So this commotion ultimately recommended against that proposed as map amendment that we had initially advanced forward. The trustees agreed with us on that, and so it did not go as an R district. Then last iteration, we worked on it as a potential B four, and then that's when it was, we decided to table that.
So we've looked at it from two different angles at this point.
It's in, and I think that it kind of is indicative of how complicated. Shoring it up is.
And and I think when you look at that, I said, you know, I know I remember Mr. Manley talking about it and like. Mr. Pearl brought it up, you start to get into the hundred year flood plane, you start to get into the riparian setbacks on there as well.
Oh, when you look back, when you look at the map, there's a lot of appearance effects. Basically, you get off the driving range and it's all riparian.
Almost half the driving range is in the riparian.
You probably do that area all year. Is that that fair? If you if you focused on all of the aspects of it, it would, it would, it would take a while.
Yeah. I I again, I don't know that there's any solution. When you look at it, it's such a small district. I to me, it made far more sense to do residential than anything. Else has been proposed. Just, we didn't have, we didn't have the community support on it.
If if I, if I were a gambling person, which I'm not, it it was likely. A spot zoning from years and years and years and years and years ago and. We're still dealing with it, which is why I want to avoid doing the same thing, creating a brand new district just for this one. Instance, um, because it creates headaches generations later.
So so I would say that that would be, you know, that would be my main area of focus. If if we were just spitballing and talking about things, I completely would be on board with that. Outside of that, I'm I'm gonna take your guys' excuse.
Cindy, do you have any specific items you'd like us to address? Or would recommend, I should say. You've got a pretty good list. We won't get through it all this year. Um, one other thing, uh, we do have the trustee meeting or hearing for the. Proposed text amendment is on February sixth. And I've asked Marcus if he would not mind attending um in my stead. A, I'm out of town and B, it's his baby, baby, I want to take your cradle to the grave on that one. And he graciously said, yes, he would. Any other comments, questions from anyone else on the board?
So as I was looking over the meet, the the minutes from last meeting, um, there was, I think it was in the organizational. Um, there was talk about uh, the the chair attending the Medina County Planning Commission. Um, in the instance that, no, no, I I guess I'm seeking clarification, I was gonna point something out. In the instance that, okay, so there's someone that always attends every meeting or only one.
There's a Hinkley filing.
Got it. So that was, if a Hinkley filing came in. Uh, in between our meeting and their meeting, that's when you might have to pivot and. Cause I think we have an instance, at least this time, where with today being the second, there's gonna be two Medina County planning.
But the filing deadline was January twenty.
Okay.
So they would have already.
They would, all right.
You would already know if someone had to attend this.
And there's no emergency or anything, it's just, okay. Got it.
But that's why we we have a default of the chair. Being, you know, having authorization to act on our behalf at those meetings or speak on our behalf at those meetings. Um, just so that in the event that something does come up in the interim, like sometimes concept plans in particular might happen and it, you know. The chair doesn't have to go to all of the concept plans. Um, in fact, I think the Hinkley chair generally attends more than most other. Medina County zoning commission chairs. But he has the authority to speak on our behalf at those meetings.
Okay.
Should there be a default where we needed someone to go.
Got it. And and should you uh, or commission meetings or any of these other meetings, should you name someone to go fill it? Uh, is a report pretty much standard to come back from those meetings with?
I I wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be a formal report, but I think certainly like, you know, just, just like now. All right, this is what, this is what we um kind of covered meeting while I was there. Um, there were questions about this. What I said was this and just kind of a briefing.
Got it.
If that.
If that.
Very good.
And while the chair is there on the zoning commission's behalf, it doesn't mean that you can't attend. You're welcome to attend any of those meetings as well. It's just that he's there on our behalf.
Gotcha.
All right, well, uh, that covers it for me. Anything for you, Ms. Crew?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think as of now, I'm, I'm good.
Cindy, is there anything you'd like?
Yes, there actually is, um, relating to your organizational, um, minutes. And I did not, um, catch this at your organizational meeting last month. But the, um, trustees requested that, um, notice of intent to continue service when your term is. Going to be up at the end of the year, um, whether you want to not continue to serve or serve. Right now in your organizational minutes, it says November fifteenth. So we're requesting, if you can amend that, amend that to November first, because sometimes the meetings, the way they work out at the beginning of the month. Um, this gives the board a little more time to kind of plan for whatever it is they will do with respect to the. So at some point, if you can do that, we would appreciate that.
Yeah, so ultimately that allows you to advertise and interview and get someone on board.
Yeah, and, and we, and we want to kind of get ahead of the holiday schedule because, you know, trying to post something December fifteenth. Um, really doesn't necessarily spur a lot of interest when people are thinking about.
Turkey.
Turkey, Christmas presents, family and that. So we'd appreciate that.
Um, is that something we want to do? Do we want to address it?
I don't have a problem with the moving that date.
Okay.
Does anybody else?
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to move from November fifteenth to the November first.
All right, moved by Ms. Crew.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Kaelis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, um, Mr. Wilson, is there anything else?
Well, I've got a couple of things, as I said earlier, I want to bring to you next month and catch you up on. You know, our residential businesses and anything I can bring to, concerning the B and Bs. From other townships or from the county, I'll certainly get, give it to you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and as far as this, this kind of exhaustive list we came up with, um, I'm not going to have, I'm, I'm going to get with, um. Suzanne to figure out like, we don't need old business that's two pages long. Um, so I'm going to figure out a way that. We can present it without it being daunting, almost like a, I, I don't know, an attachment or something that. It goes on at, to, to each, um, to each agenda.
I don't think we need to, you know, that's one of the things that we worked on last year is I don't think that we need to list every item. And, and the agenda, I would just list the one or two items that you think we're going to get to in that meeting. One, that's helpful for us so that we're preparing for the one or two items that, that you want to speak about as opposed to ten. And I, I, I don't know, I think that that seems to be better. But if you want to do an addendum of some sort, that's fine as well. But if you could just let us know what items you intend to seek to discuss.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that, and that's, that's kind of what I'm getting to is like, I, I don't want it to look like. All right, we're going to tackle all of these subjects in one month. But I also want it to be open so that anyone that attends meetings sees, all right, this is on the docket. These are things they will be addressing when they get to it. You know, which for, for someone who has an issue with, with nuisances.
Right.
I want to see that this is something that they're actually interested in, even though it's not on our list. But if you're coming to the meetings, you want to know that what you care about, they're aware of. And if they're not, then all right, at the end of the meeting, come up and say, hey, I really need you guys to consider looking at this. Does that make sense?
I think that's fair.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Crew, seconded by Fisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The regular meeting is adjourned at eight seventy.
That was a lot longer than I thought.